You guys check your mics, then we'll probably need to order.
It's April 25th, 2019, and I call the board's study session of the Rowland Unified School District Board of Education to order. It is now 4:30 PM. Dr. Mitchell, will you please do role call?
Sure.
Carrie Chan?
Here.
Jane Evansham?
Here.
Angela DePryde?
Present.
David Malkin?
Present.
Donna Friedman?
Here.
All board members present.
Are there any changes or items to be pulled from the agenda?
None. Come down.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda of the board's study session on Thursday, April 25th, 2019?
I make a motion. One second.
All in favor, so may I?
May I?
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. All in attendance will be led in a pledge allegiance to the flag by board clerk Angelina DePryde.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Mitchell, do you -- are there any public comments this afternoon?
Yes, everyone.
Please note, the public is welcome to provide comments, but the board's remarks are limited to three minutes. They are extended or limited by both of the board. A maximum of 20 minutes unless extended by the board is allocated for each subject discussed. The Brown Act open meeting, the regulations under which the board must operate, do not allow board members to comment on non-agenda items. For information, you may bring us that are not in the agenda. Additionally, no action can be taken. However, the board may give direction to stop following a comment. Roy Humphreys?
Okay, first of all, thank you for all the good things. And as you know, the only way we can move forward is if we're honest about our past. Something to help you with this would be a publication put about the Nurses' Service Association there, and it's called Workplace Violence. Okay, that'd be a very helpful thing, and some people might want to get some attorneys for that issue. And then we have to move to the packet that was sent to the Los Angeles County District Attorney. We're still waiting some action on that, and that has to do with the bogus bond oversight committee that's going on due to all the compilation of documents. The enclosed documents will evidence the district's failure to comply with state laws and regulations regarding the formation and function of the bond oversight committee for years. Myself and others have been subject to unlawful acts of which they, under Superintendent Mitchell, and the board have failed to remedy voluntarily. And then we come to -- I had the opportunity to listen to Superintendent Mitchell on the December 13th comments where she noted that the Nogales ASB money and the Hays Day Parade, $20,000, of which I've mentioned previously, with no documentation. However, documentation, which I got from the superintendent, by the way, thank you, was $21,267.69. And it reminds me of the -- remember that game we played when we were kids, card game? It's called Go Fish. It is noted also that Nigel Nigel, a county, gave classes to the Nogales ASB and followed up with two pages of discrepancies on the following audit report. And, well, everybody wants to know what happened to Ms. Wilson. Then we have Mr. Flores over here in this last board meeting, Rodney Oswald, enumerated the $20 million that didn't fall from the sky. The only thing is that he enumerated it and mounted up to $20 million. So much for that. And so, we can also have documentations on that particular situation. And then we have also -- and I was going back, but again, you have to own up to your past. And we had Ms. Judy Ny, who was the outgoing board member, $2,500 to go to a nonexistent situation down in San Diego. And who exposed that? I know this guy. His name's Roy Humphreys, by the way, thank you. And then we could go on and on, and, you know, the sexual misconduct that's gone on in this district, so forth. But, you know, that's another -- but the real issue here is integrity and character. And all the awards in the world will not get rid of that stain. And the irony of -- wait about five seconds. It's all you had to do is take over the recording of just one board meeting.
Next, we will have an overview.
You want to extend my time to 20 minutes?
I'm sorry, we're not.
No, no. Okay, thank you.
Next, we will have an overview on the mid-year profit of the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP. I will turn it over to Dr. Mitchell at this time.
Thank you. So, for the board, our Ed Services team, who is here to my left, have been working hard in preparing the mid-year review for our LCAP, to share with you the work that has been taking place throughout the year, that is demonstrated in or is published in our LCAP. You'll recall that in the past, we've done this in two study sessions. We've done Goals 3 through 6 first, and then Goals 1 and 2 in a second study session. And this year, we have opted to do all six goals together and to reformat it a little bit, to share our work as best we can through the lens of our students. And so, at this point, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Zamora, who will introduce the process. And I also would like to thank Brian Huff for his lead on this work. So, to you, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you. So, tonight, as Dr. Mitchell indicated, this is a major report, and it is much more comprehensive because this goes 1 through 6 all together. So, tonight, we want to give you an overview through the lens of our students and also highlight the programs and opportunities that we offer to our teachers, parents, staff, and site administrators, as they lead the work as well, in collaboration with all of us to educate our students here in Rowland Unified. So, on this slide, this is just a reminder of the eight state priorities that must be addressed in our Local Control and Accountability Plan. They have not changed. They are still the same eight state priorities, and we do address them in our Local Control Plan. On this slide, this just indicates the timeline. We gather data in January through April. Today, April 25th, we are providing an update, and this is the update of the second year of our plan. We continue the work as we revise our plan and bring it back to the board for review on June 5th. And the process for this year, as we move into next year's plan, is completed with our board approving it on June 18th prior to sending it to the County Office of Education. On this slide, through our presentation, we want to answer this question for you. We want to give you some information that says, how do actions in the LCAP impact students, parents, and staff? And you will see that throughout the presentation in every element that is up on the slide, such as through elementary education, special education, foster youth, English learners, leadership, teachers, secondary education, and of course, students experiencing homelessness. With that, I will turn it over to the Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, everyone. Through the lens of an elementary student, I will highlight the ways in which the LCAP supports our USD initiatives and programs. The LCAP provides a variety of experiences to great lengths. One example of an instructional shift is the opportunity for students to participate and engage in environmental science. Students, for example, learn by doing hands-on experiences as they learn the life cycle, nurture, and grow a variety of plants, vegetables, and flowers. A new shift this year, as we gathered information through the lens of student voice, was the opportunity for students to convey their thoughts in the form of student surveys. From the many questions of the student surveys given to elementary students, the three top responses were based around students' perspectives towards teachers and learning. Based on the response of 1,745 elementary students, 94% feel that teachers encourage them to share their ideas around things they are studying in class. 95% of students feel that their teacher welcomes explanations of answers and are interested in hearing why they think what they think. And finally, 97% feel confident that it is okay to ask questions and make mistakes in class, because that is the way we learn. This reflects a shift in instruction across our district. These are practices that support autonomy and trust in everyday learning in classrooms. Elementary students at Rowland Unified experience a variety of approaches, strategies, and initiatives around the Rowland Unified framework. Every elementary school has selected an area of focus that includes cognitive guided instruction for math, readers and writers workshop, or inquiry. Because of the focus areas training over the last three years, students are experiencing more small group instruction, talking about problem-solving strategies, learning strategies from each other, and having deeper and meaningful conversations through inquiry and questioning. Furthermore, students explore the Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS, through hands-on exposure led by the California Science Center. All schools participate in Next Generation Science Standards training and implementation over the past three years at all 14 of our elementary schools. Because of the LCAP funding source, these opportunities are available to all students. As a result to these commitments funded through the LCAP, 75% of 5th and 6th grade students feel that if they need help with homework, they know where and how to access tutoring help. 88% of 5th and 6th grade students feel that their teacher notices if they have trouble learning something. This is a reflection of the questioning techniques students are learning through inquiry. Students at Rowland Unified are enrolled in award-winning schools, such as the Gold Ribbon and California Distinguished Schools. Our schools support college and career readiness through Abbott, International Baccalaureate, No Excuses University, College for Every Student, and Dual Immersion. These programs have been supported through the LCAP. For this reason, our students prosper in these programs by the exposure of college and career readiness opportunities. Furthermore, students engage in the visual and performing arts and thrive in our Music for All programs at all 14 of our elementary schools for the past three years. Although extracurricular activities, sports, and clubs are offered to 100% of our students at Rowland, 61% of our students take advantage of this opportunity. Our goal is to increase the number of students at each site in the upcoming year. Saturday Exploration Academy is a fun and exciting opportunity to foster love and learning by exploring and growing student ideas, innovative thinking, and expansion of knowledge. Students that attend the Exploration Academy have the freedom to create and invent things that are interesting to them. Student attendance grew by over 500 students from the previous year. These opportunities are offered at six different sites seven times a year. Students yearn for more days and continue to request more opportunities to attend. All of this is possible by the LCAP allocations. Goal four of our LCAP supports significant work by building services. Curbside appeal is extremely important. Therefore, 70% of our 5th and 6th grade students agree or strongly agree that school sites are clean and cared for. LCAP also funds technology and updated fast Wi-Fi connections to all schools. Students in grades 3 through 6 have access to Chromebooks, and students in grades TK through 2nd grade have access to iPads. CSO in grades TK through 2nd grade is in response to teachers using it across the district in their everyday instruction. Students are also -- I'm sorry, students are able to utilize CSO to develop formative assessments. This is important because this creates ownership for their own learning and knowledge. LCAP expands beyond positive student achievement through our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, or PBIS. Students engage in restorative practices each and every day through the shared language and common commitments that students have made to reinforce positive behavioral outcomes. Through the LCAP student survey, new evidence demonstrates that students are feeling safe at school and are connected to at least one teacher at their site, which research shows that this increases success. 85% of students feel safe at school, and 89% of our 5th and 6th grade students feel they have a good relationship with at least one teacher.
So, the way we have it set to is an opportunity for questions in chunks together. So, Rebecca's going to transition from elementary over to secondary, and then we'll have an opportunity for Donna to do those next. That works for you. So, as soon as Frank's done, we're going to pause the question. Frank? Does that work?
Well, it depends how long it is.
Let's test him.
I think I have the longest part.
Good late afternoon and early evening. Word I am excited to report about secondary students and their perspective of what it looks like to be our USD student and how the LCAP will support their learning. And I want to start with this picture. This picture, there's two on the side with teachers and students really embracing, and then, of course, our ultimate goal is to graduate our students. But on the left side, you see on a day which was for our Professional Learning Day, which is supported by the LCAP, in which the entire district, or teachers, was a pupil pre-day, and we had teachers learning. And one of the things that they were able to do was what is known as an Empathia. And what you see on the left is teachers got to interview students, and students got to share their perspective about their challenges, their needs, their background. And teachers learned about their students, not just as students in a classroom, but as human beings. So, from there, it really lends itself to the Rowland Unified School District's teaching and learning framework, and what we're focusing on is successful learning for all students. So, in order to really understand how to help our students be successful, we have to know about them. And so, the two pictures on the side really shows teachers taking the time to know their students. Rebecca shared data earlier about a survey that was given to students, and it was given to students across the board. And our secondary students, 3,580 of them, responded with these particular data points about strong participation and learning. And as you can see, from their perspective, teachers were encouraging them to share their ideas, to explain their answers, and it's okay to ask questions. These are strong data points that we want to point out as a direct result from LCAP and what the schools at the secondary level have been doing to encourage the student participation. So, some of our schools have embarked on project-based learning, understanding by design, literacy. All of these key areas, best practices, have helped in regards to the data that you saw previously. We've also, as an LCAP, invested heavily in instructional coaches. We've been able to help support our teachers in ensuring that these best practices are affecting our students in a positive way. The schools have endeavored in sharing these best practices amongst themselves, as well as in instructional leadership teams across the district with core content areas. Teachers share best practices at the secondary level and bring it back to the school sites. A key data point up there is that 81% of the students know that if they need help with homework, they can get tutoring help. However, 63% of our students have noticed that the teachers don't notice them when they have trouble learning. That is something that we need to work on. And one of our focus areas of successful learning for all students means that we have to dig deep into who our students are. However, there is data that is not up there that is supported in knowing that when students have a need for academic support, 84% of our students did respond by saying, "I am aware of resources available to me on campus for academic support." And some of that academic support includes math support classes, opportunities classes, after-school tutoring. We also have credit recovery classes, and of course, summer school for enrichment and advancement. LCAP Goal Number Two. We look at the college readiness and 21st century skills. And we have 3,588 responses. And one of the things that the LCAP has heavily invested in is counseling support. And the state ratio is 760 students for every one counselor. However, our district and our contract states that a maximum ratio is 420 students to one counselor at the high school and 550 students to one counselor at the middle school. But within the LCAP and through site funding, we've actually reduced that ratio quite significantly. In fact, that ratio is closer to about 350 to 1 at the high school and about 450 to 1 at the middle school. And again, that's the product of the investment ensuring counseling support for college and career readiness. We're very excited to see a lot of the programs that we offer. And students not only get to benefit from closer counselor-to-student ratio and relationships, but they also benefited from a new partnership in California Career Zone, in which they were able to complete activities. And we saw 92% of our students able to complete activities such as interest profilers, career interest surveys, and et cetera. We remember our College Fair that happens every fall. This is our third annual one. We have notable universities such as Harvard. We have Pomona Colleges. We have Pepperdine. Of course, the best university of all, UC Irvine. We also continued our partnership with -- We also continued our partnership with Azusa Pacific, Grand Canyon, and University of Laverne to ensure that our students have automatic admission for our graduates. And in fact, we're bringing a lot of our students over to summer, undergraduate students, over to summer, to walk those campuses, so they can share and know what college is all about. And of course, we continue our partnership with Mount SAC for student enrollment, as well as for summer school courses. Abbott has been an ongoing support in the LCAP. We not only support Abbott through funding, but we actively support Abbott in trainings. Project Lead the Way, we have offered a lot of classes. This year, you've all, many of you, I saw when we went to Gianna for those college and career ready action labs, STEM labs, that is new as well. Career Technical Ed, have brought on eight new courses this year for A through G approval, and the CTE pathways, our A pathways. Of course, IB schools, AP is continued. And that has brought a lot of distinction to our schools. This year, one of our high schools got recognized as a California distinguished school. And the last little image you see over there in the bottom right is our goal ultimately is that they get that gap and gown, walk across that platform, and they're graduates. As Dr. Rodriguez had mentioned earlier, all of our schools are in co-ports for PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. In this Positive Behavior, these are part of our 21st century skills. LCAP Goal Number Two is college and career readiness and 21st century skills. And the skill sets that we need to teach our students in regards to positive behaviors and how to correct those positive behaviors, how to interact with your fellow students, how to demonstrate a sense of restorative practices to ensure when there is wrong, you know how to right, you know how to make things right. And you see on the bottom-left corner is our suspension rates, as well as students going to -- My time is up. Although first semester from last year and first semester from this year are very similar in the number of what is known as ECOs, the Sustainable Acts, we've actually decreased the actual number of suspensions because they participated in the Alternative to Suspension Program. In that program, they were under the supervision of a teacher, and the teacher led them through restorative practices, talked to them of how, what mistakes they made in misconducts and misbehaviors, and set plans when they went back to their schools, how can we right the wrong. We also have been, as you see throughout the district, technology services and building services working hard to beautify the campus, offering technology support, and our students are definitely benefiting from that. We have our students, 6,105 email accounts created for our students. In our partnership with Sprint, we have 279 hotspots, free Wi-Fi for our students. We have NearPod being used in 98 classes, and this is really used for formative assessments, checking for understanding for our teachers, because they really wanted a tool in which they could do that more effectively. We have access for internet 10 times faster, I believe it is. I mean, these are things that our students are experiencing at school through the LCAP. And of course, building services have been working hard. Although 68% of the students agree or strongly agree that the school is clean, we do know that a lot of work is being done to address beautifying the campuses. We've been paving them. You see new structures. And we really, when we dig down deeper into why it's only 68%, we do know that we've been able to say it's probably the boys' restroom that need a lot of cleaning. But we do know that building services is working hard at that to beautify the campuses. So, I've had an opportunity to really just share a lot about the highlights of what our secondary students have been able to experience. And up, Dr. Malkin, this is time for the question.
Okay, so this is the time we're going to put them in order. And if you have any questions for LCAP 1 and 2, this would be the time to do that. So, Carrie, we'd like to go first, if you have any questions on the presentation on LCAP 1 and 2.
On page 6?
Can you hear your mic, Carrie? On slide 6?
Yeah, page, yeah, page 6. And 94% answered and 95 answered. And this survey for 1,745 students, what grade were they from? What's the youngest in the list?
I believe it was 5th grade, 5th was the 6th graders. Ryan, do you want to share on our student base survey?
So, this was the first you were able to do a comprehensive student survey. We got about 5,000 current members of students respond in grades 5 through 12. When we did a survey a couple of years ago, 5th grade was about the youngest. We got the teachers that they really understood the items, so we stuck with those rate levels.
Be younger than, than 5th grade, they don't even understand the question?
On the questions, do they have a chance, for instance, the question about cleanliness? Are we finding bunniness? Are we talking about paint that needs to be done, or are we talking about trash on the ground that students drop?
We did, we did mention everything. Ask the question.
We did, we did mention everything, asked the questions. So yes, we did, we did clarify if they had questions in terms of, do you mean the restrooms? Do you mean our classrooms? Do you mean our school in general? So we did take the gamble.
I'm gonna share the difference between this written survey and then what we discussed about with the follow-ups. Do you want to section two?
Sure. So that particular question, we had some questions as a follow-up, so if they disagreed with it. So the way the question was written was, my school is clean, strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. And if they disagreed, we had an open-ended text where they could tell us more about that. So we were doing more analysis on that. But then what we did was all the, Ed Services analyzed the data and then came up with focus group questions. So we surveyed five thousand students, got the data, and went out to ten schools and talked to small groups and shared. Well, these were their findings, what we found out. Can you tell us a little more about that?
I was glad to hear, I think Frank on page, on slide fourteen, or page fourteen, he said that sixty-three percent is where we need to concentrate, since the students did not feel the teachers notice if they needed, they understood, or if they needed help. And that's a very important part of this equation, because the teacher should be able to pick up quickly and want the students to feel like they are. On the, that same slide down lower on the page, when we're talking about the counselor ratios, are those, you didn't have an elementary level, is that right? You had high school and middle school?
Going back to the surveys and the focus group, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So there was a written survey given to all students?
Yes, in fifth, fifth through twelfth grade.
Was it given like during school time, or, okay. And then you said that they had like strongly agree, agree, whatever, and that they could send in additional information if they wanted to elaborate on it?
For select questions, that, right, we had follow-up open and open text box responses.
Okay. Just the reason I ask is because I was just wondering on some of the questions, for example, there was a question about where to get tutoring help. And so I was just wondering, do they think, well, yeah, you know, mom and dad can take me and pay for a tutor, or, you know, or were they talking specifically about where to get tutoring help from the district or on their campus? Did the question state specifically?
So we just asked the question as you see it there. If I need help with homework, I can get tutoring help. And then the other one that Frank mentioned, if I need help, are there, are there resources available for me? We did not ask a follow-up question on that, that might be a good addition for next year.
Yeah, because I'm just concerned that some of the kids will think, well, yeah, you know, my mom, my dad, my cousin, brother, whoever, but I want to know if they know what resources are available to them through the district. Then my other question is, so the focus group was a result of the survey questions, where you guys wanted to gather additional information?
Right. So we had about fifteen to twenty findings from the survey, and we wanted to get more information from the students about, so for example, those three quotes that we had to begin in the elementary and the secondary, those were the top-rated survey questions. So, and one of them was, I feel like it's a made of mistakes and sharing. So we wanted to get more information from them about what that looks like in a classroom. And other key findings from, from the survey that we just asked follow-up questions to get more anecdotal information.
And what factors were used to determine who could participate in those focus groups?
So this year, we, we did a random sample of students and made sure there was representation from all the LCFF subgroups. So we, we did all of the secondary schools and then three elementary schools, Northside School and then Southside Schools. And we made sure that there was at least two foster students, two students low income, two English learners, students that are receiving special education services. So we made sure that that was represented equally in the, in the groups. And then for the high schools, because they have leadership teams, we gave one slot of the eighteen slots for them to choose a leadership student to participate in that. So tried to make sure that it was random so that we weren't cherry-picking students and we're getting honest feedback. And also represented students that were important for the LCFF.
And who conducted those focus groups?
So the, the Ed Services staff here.
We also, those focus groups are, we've been doing those for several years since, and they've been, but what's new this year is the survey. So we have done focus groups where we've gone out and had conversations that, around very specific questions and small group of each of us.
I remember ones from previous years, yeah.
So this year, we did the survey first, so more students had the opportunity to share perspective. And then we went back and, and then we went into the focus groups and had follow-up questions so we could seek even greater clarity. So your students said that eighty-eight percent do this, but where's the, how do you do that? Or where does that happen, or so forth? So the focus group conversations is, is not new to us, but what is new was the survey and then the very pointed follow-up in the focus group.
All right. Thank you, Ryan.
On page six, the end that you have there, seventeen forty-five, what percentage is that of the total potential number of students?
Seventy-four-five, it's fifth and sixth graders, so there are about thousands, don't have a ton of them. About a thousand students in every grade level, so about two thousand. I can get you the exact...
No, that's about two thousand, if you're sorry.
It was a very, we had about a seventy, ten percent response.
Yeah, it's very good. On the, you know, we want all the kids to go to college. Yet as we know, college is looking for students that are well-rounded, that participate in multiple activities. Yet on page eight, sixty-one percent were involved in sports or clubs or other activities. At the beginning of the year, do we have a club rush at all, where all the clubs have tables set up and kids rush to join in?
And David, that's elementary. That's the sixth grade number. That's not a high school number, but I guess.
Yes, we do come rushing.
Okay. On the Saturday program on page ten, is there a charge for that for the students?
No.
Plus three?
Three, so then to all students.
And then on page ten, also on the bottom, the eighty-five percent of students in grades five and six agree, or strongly agree, that I feel safe at school. It'd be nice, we, I know a hundred percent's not possible, but it'd be nice if we get a higher score. Because if we have fifty percent of our students that don't feel safe, then they're not going to be able to learn if they don't feel safe. So I'd be curious, you know, why they don't feel safe. And also on the secondary, the three-thousand-five-eighty, is that, you know, approximately what percentage of those students that are present?
They're around five thousand secondary students. So this, so this, this thirty-five-eighty is about the seventh through twelfth grade.
Right.
I don't know this.
I'm just wondering, how many, tell me that, what group that represented, the total students? I agree with my peers over here that sixty-three percent of the teachers did not notice that they're having learning problems?
They did notice. I think that, yes, we need to correct that.
Oh, noticed, yeah. I mean, noticed.
Yes.
That, it would be interesting if we could do follow-up with the teachers to find out why that is. You know, is it a workload situation, or what it is, that they have problems with the other students that aren't being recognized? On the counselor ratios, is that strictly, because when I've asked about counselors in the past, it's always been counselors that talk about A through G requirements and graduation requirements and things like that. For mental health issues and things like this, do these counselors identify those issues and then refer on to other people? Or do we have other counselors to handle those issues?
Yes, I think you explain that situation very accurately. They do identify it. Oftentimes, our counselors are the first line of understanding where additional resources are needed. And I believe later on, we'll get into more details about those kinds of supports for those, for student-based interventions.
You know, the sixty-eight percent that feel that the campuses are, are clean, I think a good follow-up question would be asking the parents if their son or child's room is clean at home. And see what percentage we get on that. The suspensions and alternative suspensions, you know, that's a catch-22 on that, you know. I like it because the numbers are going down. But then when I hear the teachers coming to the board meetings, they're complaining that nothing happens to the students that are misbehaving. So it's like, you don't suspend them, but then at the other end, you hear from the teachers that we're not doing, we're not being aggressive on dealing with behavior problems. So, you know, it's hard for me to interpret those numbers as to, is that good or is it bad? I think the alternative to suspensions going up, I think that's good. Is that because of the ALT that we opened up, that are going over there?
Yes, at the ATS, the Alternative Suspension, although these are ed codes that allows for us to actually suspend them, historically, suspension meant that we send them home unsupervised oftentimes of families. In this case, at the Alternative to Suspension, they are supervised under a teacher. So they may have violated the ed code, but we wanted them to be under the supervision of a teacher, but also to receive the kind of benefit that a teacher would offer, such as teaching them how to right the wrong, how to plan for when they go back to the site, how to apologize to a teacher, how to...
Yeah, that's exactly where I'm coming from, is that. I would hope that it would be more instructional and changing behavior in a positive way rather than be punitive. And so to me, that looks good. Like I said, when I come to the board meeting and hear teachers speaking, they interpret it a different way.
I think it's important to note that in those numbers, in seventeen eighteen, it was two-hundred-and-thirty-two students who were suspended from school, so removed from school. Seventy-five of those students went to alternative suspension. They were still suspended. They went to alternative suspension and received some of the supports that Frank just mentioned. In the eighteen-nineteen school year, and yet both of these are comparing first semester, was two-hundred-and-thirty. So it's two fewer students removed from school. So, but it is, more students are engaging in, as Frank had shared, those, the alternative suspension. So I think that number, when we only look at the top number, it doesn't necessarily tell the whole story. You have to look at both of them combined.
And then, go ahead.
Also, just, just to also iterate that what you see on the dashboard is just what's on the top line. So the dashboard will display the one fifty-seven to one twenty-four, but in reality, there are, the staff is responding and supporting students with both suspensions and alternative suspensions.
On the safety, are you going to be covering the safety more under Go Five, under Go Five? Or since you brought it up here, I guess we can open up for questions?
So Go Five is woven through all of the stories.
Okay. Well, for the safety, two things. One, if there could be a focus group on the safety question next time, because like I said earlier, safety is really important to have a positive learning environment. And then under, you know, these magazines, and the CSBA, something magazine there, School News, there's a new law that came out, AB seventeen forty-seven regarding safety plans and safety in schools, where you have to involve the police department, the sheriff's department, first responders, the fire department. Have we involved those people now? Oh, the other one is, I guess it was last month now. You know, I participated in the CTE, Career Technical Education Home Program. And I noticed in the elementary school, you have no excuse, university, all kids go to college and all this. Do we do anything focusing on CTE at all at that grade level?
I'll take that one. So in terms of particular specifics of CTE, we don't have a CTE elementary school program. So we started at the high school, and then we built the career labs at the middle school level. We don't have a CTE, part of that is the certification for a teacher is a secondary single-subject credential. But the work that they do in terms of problem-solving, exposure to technology, working together as a team, collaborating, et cetera, and exploring careers does happen at the elementary level.
Because that's, that's what Ms. Lewis carries about, that education should be a choice. And there's many choices. There's college, there's CTE, independent businesses, et cetera. And I think we need to put the whole, all the choices out and let the child choose which they, which path they would choose. Education now in college is almost beyond so many of the students' reaches because of, I think they should have the choice to choose college. But is it a reality? Is it a real choice that they have?
Right. I think our, our interest or goal is that, and what I've said before, when a student graduates from our school, that we have provided them every opportunity to go to a four-year school, a two-year school, a trade school, military, straight into the workforce, travel, whatever their, whatever their choice is, but we haven't limited their choices at all. So some of the programs at the elementary level is opening, opening up students' eyes to the possibilities that they can go to college. They can achieve that opportunity. And these are the steps that it would take to be able to do that. And then, but specific CTE courses start at the middle school.
Which, which we saw at Nobales High School when they had the college sign, that all the kids there, half of them stood up when they asked, how many, are you the first, the youngest person in your family to go to college? Half of those students stood up, which that looks remarkable. Okay, thank you.
As far as the different choices, the lab at Gianna that we, that opened up, those kids get to rotate around and have all these different fields that they could go into. So they spark their interest in anything, and the kids like that. The presentation was so nice, how you did it compared to other years that we have lived in, and so thank you. Very good. I really enjoyed the first page, which almost everybody talked about. Page six with the percentages, with the kids knowing to ask questions and share and all that. So everything was wonderful. Thank you, you did a great job. I do have questions about, on the full report, high school, just quick questions. I noticed for Santana on page thirty-seven, where it's the college and career readiness, it was zero percent prepared. But then I was reading about the twelve students that go to adult school, they don't count as a dropout. They count as a dropout. Could you give them some more information? That's terrible to read that.
So up until last year, students that transferred to the adult school immediately after completing grade twelve are removed from the calculation. So we were penalized for, for our graduation rate. So that was, as of last year, changed, and they recalculated the last two years of the graduation rate, which is why the continuation schools across the state dropped. So we're kind of, it's kind of an apples-to-oranges comparison. You can't... You can't, if you go on data quest, and it tells you very clearly, do not compare this to old years. So it's sort of, we're at a baseline year for Santana. And Frank Chang has been doing a lot of work in building new pathways and strategies to increase that.
And those students that graduate after adult school, they don't get any credit in law, anything, it seems like, that came from Santana, that went to the adult school with a high school diploma?
They do, by the way.
They do, but the Roland, it shows that, no, we didn't have. We got dropout instead, which they really kind of were not dropouts. They continued their education. But it shows on the paperwork that they were. Okay. And then on page thirty-eight, Santana, oh, I wanted to know where it says, like cohort, cohort students? What does that mean because they don't add up? Were the diploma graduations still enrolled and dropouts?
So that cohort number is the, so that's a four-year cohort. So those are the students that, over the four years, were part of the graduating class.
And that's why the numbers are different? They don't add up to that? Okay, and the last one, on page forty-seven. Let's see, it says the following are the articulation activity results. So Nogales, enrollment CTE classes were outstanding. They passed a lot of the tests. They passed, everyone passed. It was outstanding. But my question is, for Nogales and Roland ROP, they did not. And do you, hey, do we know why that the numbers are so low as far as passing the test for those ROP classes, when the other, our teachers at Roland got a hundred percent? Okay. Well, where it says Nogales, it says number of applicants, number of test takers, and number of passing. So Nogales and a Roland district teachers, or that were in the CTE, they all passed the test. All seventy-six and all twenty, seventy-six at Roland and twenty. And then at the ROP, they took the test, but like, a lot of them did not pass it. I was wondering if you possibly know how it is. Okay.
Excuse me, can I, can I interrupt real quickly? Are they talking about, on the part of the test that they have to take in order to articulate them for going to community college? Yes, okay.
We can give, we can give an answer.
I was just curious why he did this.
All right, thank you so much.
We're gonna shift to the next group.
Give, give, it's a gift.
All right, you ready? All right, so we're gonna transition now in terms of looking at, Dr. Tim Pipp is gonna start us off regarding our work in the LCAP, who students with disabilities in our district. We're gonna talk about our Yale students, our cluster year students, and students experiencing homelessness.
All right, so, good evening. I'm gonna talk a little bit about special education this evening. I put these numbers up here because I wanted you to see the top four categories in disabilities. But more importantly, each one of these numbers represent a student who oftentimes experiences quite a bit of frustration in their learning, as you know. And oftentimes will encounter failure throughout their day with different tasks and skills that they're trying to encounter, or trying to learn. So it's very important that we pay attention to that, obviously, because that frustration can lead to behaviors, can lead to things that take them off-task and take them away from focusing on their learning. So, we're excited that we have implemented some programs that, that help decrease that frustration, help kids access the common core in the least restrictive environment. So, oh, I don't know whether it does that. Did you have accommodation? I needed accommodation. So one of the things we've implemented, thanks to you, board, and your support, is the attainment curriculum, not that yet, sorry. The attainment curriculum is for students with moderate to severe disabilities, and it's aligned with common core standards. All moderate to severe special day classrooms were trained and supplied with curriculum to ensure that students are meeting their goals and objectives, and our learning material aligned with common core standards. The curriculum allows teachers' materials to instruct students and, most importantly, help them meet their goals and objectives relative to common core standards. So we're excited about attainment and continuing that. Gemini is an evidence-based intervention that uses video modeling. It's a very interesting intervention, and it's been very successful with our students with autism. The way it works is, it's also in moderate to severe classrooms, but it engages students in video modeling via iPads and technology that they're, that are very stimulating and engaging. And so, a lot of our students with autism utilize this approach to improve their language and communication skills. So we're excited again about continuing that program. Co-teaching is an instructional model that we've implemented at different sites. We're excited about this model because it allows for many students to be in the least restrictive environment and be instructed in the least restrictive environment. Meaning, a education specialist will co-teach that classroom with a general education teacher. So they co-plan, they co-teach the lesson, and it affords a lot of our students with disabilities to be in that environment to, again, access common core standards and make progress. One of the programs I'm most excited about is the Read and Write program. It's an accommodation software. And you could really see students, in terms of speaking to students' experience with this accommodation software, you can really see that frustration level come down immediately. The software basically allows for students, it's a Google overlay, that allows for students to have text read to them, or they can dictate into the computer, which produces text for them. So for a lot of students, it's very, very difficult just to get started on a project, just to get engaged in that project, engage in the reading and writing project that's in front of them. And so, having those accommodations via read aloud and dictation helps them start that process. I have a video, actually, that I want to show you. I really like this little guy. He's gonna, he's gonna kind of give you a life-size picture of the frustration level being alleviated with the use of some of these accommodations.
So, the Read and Write program, you're using it on what? Who do you use it on?
My Chromebook.
Okay, your Chromebook. And what is it that you do with that?
We, we write like things, like, we have to write about like a, we had to write about something in my classroom, and it was too hard to type it. So Mr. Isaac pulled us out so he could help us, and we went on that program, and all we did was just reading it.
So you're using the, the letter, are you liking it?
No, we don't have to type like forty thousand letters. We could just sing to it.
So, pre, Read and Write is up above, and Post is his work after using the accommodation software. Yeah. This was what his backpack looked like before he actually started using that accommodation software, and these are more products that he produced utilizing that. The, the other great thing about Read and Write, again, is, is least restrictive environment is very important, to deliver services in the general education classroom with same-age peers. And Read and Write allows for that to happen. All of the students in that classroom were utilizing Read and Write, general ed and students with disabilities. A quote from a third-grade teacher, a couple of quotes, Alvin utilizing Read and Write in an entire classroom. It took twelve to fifteen minutes to type a paragraph for most kids on average. After using Read and Write, it was three to five minutes typed, using the Read and Write software and accommodations for all students, not just students with disabilities. Reduces stress around organization for special education students. And also, students are catching errors in their writing that they would have not caught on their own when using Read aloud. So when they dictate and look at the paragraph and have it read back to them, they catch around them than when they read it silently. So, I got specific into that accommodation software because I think it's quite powerful in allowing kids to access the curriculum and move forward. So, we're gonna keep, keep moving forward with a lot of these programs, and are excited to start new programs also. So thanks again for, for supporting us.
So, LCAP one, which is Student Achievement for All, a major part of it is our English learner subgroup. And currently at Roland Unified, we have about a thousand three hundred and twenty-one English learners. We have thirty-four languages. Our highest language is Spanish, which is at sixty-nine percent. Then our next language is Mandarin, which is at seventeen percent. And then we have Cantonese at six percent. And surprisingly, some of our languages have switched in terms of percentages. So the next highest one after Mandarin is Cantonese at six percent, then Tagalog, then Indonesian, Arabic, Vietnamese, and then Korean. And those other languages, the last three are one percent. So it's always changing every year, but right now, of course, our top is always Spanish and Mandarin. For the purposes of the next few slides, I'm gonna focus on the, our secondary group of English learners and our newcomers, because that's our biggest group right now. We, and I'll go over that. Right here, we have our newcomers from the, our two high schools. And as we look at, at this data, we know that we have a lot of room for improvement with our English learners, but in terms of performing and the state, we double in every, double in every of the areas our rate. I know that it's really surprising for many people because of, just to the fact that the S factor is very much language-based, and there's a lot of reading and writing. And if you remember, English learners, it's always a moving group. As the English learners get better, we reclassify them, and they move on, and then we get new English learners. So it's always constantly moving. So we wanna obviously improve, but we have been recognized for the past two years by English learner advocacy groups for our scores on S F. Wanted just to give you a little bit of context, because we have a lot of, all our English learners, they're all pretty unique. And so when we look at our LCAP actions, there's different, there's different supports for different types of English learners, and also we differentiate some of our professional development. So one of our English learners, we'll be talking about our group, is our recent arrivals. But even our recent arrivals to the country, they vary because we have some students that come highly educated from other countries, then we have some students that actually have no prior schooling or very limited prior schooling. We also have our migrant students, which they're not all, they're not all pretty, all English learners, but a lot of them are. And we have, of course, our long-term English learners and our students that are doing well and that get reclassified, and then we monitor them. The LCAP I mentioned before delineates different levels of support that we have for students. So, I'm not gonna show that first video. I'm just gonna show, have a couple of videos embedded there, and I know it was probably, you could probably have the chance to look at it later. But basically, this is just a day in an English learner life. So basically, our newcomers, when they come in, our actual kids have made videos for them in different languages. So we have, we have Spanish, MAM, and Chinese so far. And what the video does is actually our newcomers telling them what to expect, because if you could imagine, if they didn't have any schooling, they're coming from a different type of environment, going into a comprehensive high school like Nogales or Roland can be very daunting for them. So if you look at the video, it's very cute because they talk about, you know, what to expect with their teacher, what are some tough words, you know, tough questions that they wanna ask, like going to the restroom, things like that. So they talk of, the kids really do a good job of it. And now, besides having the different typologies of English learners, we also have different English learners that come with proficiency levels. So we have some English learners, even though they're recent arrivals, they have a higher proficiency level and some have beginning. One of the things in the data we know that helps support English learners is the instructional materials that's provided through the LCAP, that sometimes increase class, I mean, it has decreased class size, also specialized PD that's provided for English learners. But when they go throughout their day, they're doing what we call double the work, because if they're very limited in English, they're, of course, working on their English language at the same time that they're learning content. If you, and then, of course, the other thing that I wanted to mention in terms of our USD is that with the professional development that they have, they receive, of course, differentiated instruction in ELD, but also, also throughout, throughout the day in social studies, science, and math. And lastly, we're bridging the digital divide with our English learners, because it all, and thanks to your support, all our classrooms with ELs pretty much have the technology, the one-to-one. They also have Wi-Fi in their home if it's needed at the secondary level. So, and then, of course, they participate in different events. And the schools, our schools make sure that they're about them and that they're able to participate in as many curricular activities that they, and, and many of them, in the end, if they gain proficiency in English pretty quickly, get the seal of literacy. Another thing I wanted to mention in terms of equality and equity, so our English learners have access to the core, which is very important. But one of the things when we look at access to the core is the equity. They have access, but we have to put in supports for our English learners so they can access support. The courses that they receive, especially at the secondary level, but also at elementary. So listed there are just some of the supports that we have for our English learners. So throughout the day, one of the things that we have for English learners is additional counseling contacts. In some of our, our schools, we have interventions that we do, tutoring. We have a specialized coach for English learner, for English learners, teachers to provide them with strategies. In addition to new, new this year is our Mandarin Dual Program. And of course, our Mandarin Dual Program, as shown, has assisted our English learner program by building on their strengths and their primary language for our Chinese speakers, and then for our English speakers, of course, learning a second language. But in addition to that, our Dual Program has really had an But in addition to that, um, our dual program has really had an impact because we have one teacher that goes to the different classrooms at least thirty minutes every, every week. Gender, actually TK through sixth grade and teaches the kids Mandarin as a second language. And they've really enjoyed it to the point that they recently won some awards and are continuing to compete with other, with other Chinese language schools. One of the things that we're very proud of is our extended learning opportunities that we have for our students throughout the summer. We have varied opportunities for them. We know that in the summer, many of our students that are socially, economically disadvantaged, they fall behind. Because based on the fact that they don't have resources as other students may have. So we are, we are offering for the past, I think we're in our fourth year, offering a variety of programs such as the interdisciplinary program that includes specific standards in language arts and math. We've offered robotics, three D printing, coding, deep fade, and, um, and also several trips to USC. I wanted to share a little bit, I'm not gonna show that video yet, a little bit about our English learner development opportunities that we have. So as we know, we have so many English learners, different typologies, different proficiency levels. So we really, when we, when we train our teachers, we look at what are the subgroups of kids that they have in their class. But I wanted to highlight Achievement Made Possible, which is one of our professional learning communities that we have, that we started about three years ago. And during this training, teachers come mainly after school. But they have maybe like sometimes two release days a year, but it's mainly after school that they come and they, and it's K-12. So it's really the vertical articulation and the focus is really how to integrate technology for English learners so that it enhances their learning. So here are just the, some examples of what we do. We've had, have of course, face-to-face training. We also do the Zoom platform. So if teachers don't wanna come to the RIC to have the training, they could also look at it from their classroom if they want to after school or when they get home, they could, they could look at it also. So we've offered it in different areas and some, and one of the things that's really, really valuable is that the teachers feel so empowered that they present to other teachers and they present to themselves in terms of learning. And one last thing I wanted to mention is that K-12 teachers have developed partnerships too. So we have a partnership with our, one of our dual kinder teachers have, they have worked with Roland High ELD class. And the ELD class at Roland High have developed books for the kinder kids and online, they read the books to them. And they together establish a partnership to help themselves at the same time learn more about technology and integrate that the kids have benefited greatly. But besides that, we have many national and state conferences that we attend. Um, and those are just some examples. So I did wanna share before we get, before you, this, I did wanna share a portion of this video. So these are our EL student voices. But one of the tech tools that we use is Splitgrid. And our ELD teachers have all been using it, our AM teachers have all been using it, but also other teachers in the district do it. And what it is, it's an online tool that we use to actually hear student voices and look at how they're meeting the listening and speaking standards. And we calibrate with other teachers and we see how are they advancing. But we also use it, um, to gain advice. So this video specifically giving teachers an advice of telling us how they felt coming to school and also how, how are teachers gonna make learning more successful for them. Like just a little, yeah, the first one. Oh, they're both great, but just a little bit.
Hi, my name is Hola, that's and I'm from Mexico. Um, when I was barely sitting at my full size, well, because it was my first time coming to a new school in a new country. Fortunately, I made good friends that helped me to be successful in school. The hardest thing for me to do in a new school was making friends and adapting to a new environment because I'm not social enough to make friends right away. And it was the first time I went to a new school in a new country. The good thing is that I made, um, two good friends that helped me along the, the first semester of school year. Right now, they're my best friends. Um, the school, no, I mean, the people that helped me the most was the teachers and my two friends because the English I know right now is a result of what my teachers taught me and what my friends taught me. Uh, one of the advices I will give to the teachers who teach kids that don't speak English is to be patient with them because sometimes it's not easy to teach both sides of students. Another advice is to give always the best to teach the kids because.
So, part of the way we use split, I felt to mention last, is split split is for our English learner portfolio too because we wanna make sure they're, they're meeting the standards. So that's part of their electronic portfolio. Um, and I wanted to.
So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about students ex, is it on? Yes. Okay. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about students in our district who are experiencing homelessness. And, uh, we identify a student who's experiencing homelessness through the district residency survey, which is then verified by a liaison. We also might determine that a student's homeless from a referral from one of our schools. And, uh, our homeless, our services for students experiencing homelessness are provided through a variety of funding sources, but the ALCAP does provide for the majority of the salaries for this hard-working staff. You see photographed here. And, uh, currently, we have two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one students experiencing homelessness. But it's important to note that we have identified more than three thousand five hundred throughout the year. And that difference of about seven hundred and sixty students just points to that transient and a highly mobile nature of this, of this group of students. But for however long they're here, we do our very best to, to eliminate those barriers and, and get them achieving the best they can in school. So students are identified as homeless using the MiKimiBento Federal Definition, which includes doubled or tripled up out of economic necessity and living in a temporary shelter motel or hotel and, uh, living in space that's not meant for human habitation. So a car, garage that's not been updated, um, a shed, a trailer campsite or, um, often unfortunately, sometimes unfortunately, um, storage spaces. And so. Alright, that's okay. Guess I gotta check that. Uh, so, all students who are identified as homeless are, um, often have trouble with food insecurity. And so they are immediately and automatically, um, provided breakfast and lunch in our schools with no delay. And their, their parents are provided information about our two food distributions as well on both sides of town. And to help eliminate the difficulties with transportation, student, liaisons facilitate getting an immediate bus pass, um, for our students. And then, um, because the learning experience is very complex for homeless students, teachers, uh, receive professional development in how to address the needs of homeless students. And the FRC staff receives a great deal of training in eliminating barriers. So with so many students who are homeless, uh, we use a tiered system similar to the one you're familiar with, with PBIS. Uh, and this helps, uh, this helps focus our, our, the services we provide on, on the need. So, most of the services are provided through referrals. And, um, we know that students could be in different tiers and move throughout the tiers throughout the year based on their circumstances. And they could be in different tiers with different aspects of their life. So a student who is older, tripled up out of economic necessity would be a lower tier than somebody living on the street or even moving from motel to motel. But that very same student could be in tier three with their behavior or their academic need or another aspect of their life. So, um, it's, it's flexible. So for a tier one student, uh, a student in need of tier one support, parents are given information about how to support their children's educational needs. And that would be through morning break club. Uh, we offer parenting, parent project and loving solutions, which meet the court mandate when a judge requires that, uh, parent attend parenting classes. We also have a lot of agencies that come in and provide parenting. So, um, we provide students, oh, also, we help the parents with HomeLink. Sometimes they have trouble navigating that. And so, uh, liaisons provide help with that. Often homeless students, because of the disruption to their educational history and all the trauma in their life and the challenges, they do have academic deficits. So to help with this, we provide the homework club. We provide students with clothing, backpacks, hygiene kits, school supplies so that they're equipped with what they need for school. Uh, and we do a lot of home visits, um, for all kinds of areas, but, um, attendance to make sure kids are coming to school and removing whatever barriers might be keeping them from coming to school every day. Uh, providing resources and helping with transportation are, these are common referrals. Homeless families often have a bit of difficulty accessing medical care and healthcare. So we do a lot of medical support, helping families get signed up or sometimes our families fall off of Medicare, the medical, they think they're covered and something's happened and they've fallen off. So we can identify that and get them back in. And then, of course, we link them to our two clinics, our medical clinic at Viacorda, our vision and dental clinic at, um, the Family Resource Center. As well as a lot of partners, our Safe and Healthy Kids Fair orients our families to a lot of the resources that are in our community for them. Okay, so, tier two, uh, mental health referrals are very common among our homeless students. And, um, this is due to their high mobility, the often high levels of stress in their homes and other compounding variables. So counseling referrals, we go to outside agencies or, um, substance abuse counseling at all our secondary schools. And we also have the GIRET program at, um, seven of our schools. And we have a new district social worker who provides, uh, some group counseling at Gianna, Viacorda for students in restorative practices, decision-making, social skills, and other areas that can help them get back on track, do, doing well in school. Sometimes our homeless students, um, because of the disruption to their schooling and other challenges, we have to help them achieve graduation, uh, through reduced credit graduation assistance. So that's meeting the minimum state requirements for graduation. So we do, we do a lot of those out of the Family Resource Center. And then some of our events that are considered tier two, they're by invitation only and based on the students' needs are Fresh Start, the Thanksgiving Basket Distribution, Cookie Lady, uh, Holiday Baskets, Heart and Soul, and Senior Dreams. Uh, then we, we get to tier three interventions, uh, which is, uh, it, it's a small pop, a small percentage of the overall homeless population, but these needs are very severe. And so, one of the things we do is when families are on the street completely, we refer them to the coordinated entry system. And that helps them get housing. Uh, we can also provide motel vouchers when we have them um, to help families who are suddenly with no place to go. And, um, student, homeless students often demonstrate extreme mental health and behavioral needs. And to address this, we have an agreement with Five Acres to provide therapeutic behavior supports. And also, we, um, we are doing some referrals to Department of Mental Health directly for full-service partnership, which is twenty-four-seven support in the home, in the school, and really aimed at getting kids to a place where they can do well in school and, and have some success in life. And, uh, we have a lot, a strong linkage with the Department of Public Health when there are severe health issues going on. And some of our tier three events were, which are very limited, um, are Adopt and Shop and Shop Lip and Cock. So those we reserve for the very, very neediest families. So, that's homeless. And now, you're on your desk board, we'll talk about foster.
Alrighty. Um, so I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the services that we provide to students, um, who are in foster care in our district. Cause as you know, our foster students are some of our most vulnerable students. They have, um, some, some very extreme needs. And so, I wanna talk to you today a little bit about how the ALCAP provides these, it's, it's support and helping removing these barriers that are for our foster students. So currently, we have eighty-six foster students enrolled in our USD. Many of the same services are provided, sorry. Many of the same services are provided to foster youth as are provided to our homeless loo, homeless youth. They are immediately provided free and reduced lunch, provided transportation if needed. Parents are given access to before and after-school care through options. And information on their student status, social worker, edge rights holder, et cetera, um, is communicated monthly to the schools through the FRC. Just like we, Laurel shared about the tier supports, we also do the same classification for our foster students to classify how much intensive support these students need. So some of the tier one supports that we provide our students. Again, we just mentioned that all of the same tier one supports that we provide to our foster, to our homeless students are provided to our foster students as we strive to remove the barriers that exist to these, for these students. Foster students tend to have frequent disruptions in their education due to changes in placement. Therefore, every effort is made to keep foster students, uh, in their school of origin. Um, a best interest determination meeting is held upon enrollment of a new foster student or a change in placement for an existing foster student to determine whether the student should remain at their school of origin or begin at a new school of residence. We also have an agreement with DCFS that provides hop, skip, drive transportation for foster students to maintain their school of origin if needed. Foster students also often have gaps in their learning. Uh, for this reason, summer school opportunities are made available for all students in foster care. Foster parents communicate particular needs. For this reason, foster, the FRC provides our foster family events to provide a family time, a meal, information, and encouragement to build a sense of community among the foster caregivers. We also support the, for foster parents who need to complete a certain number of hours of parenting education each year. Uh, this involves offering a menu of options, including the parent project and classes provided by Citrus College that meet the requirements by DCFS. Um, also, foster, as we know, foster students are underrepresented in colleges and universities. For this reason, foster students in grades ten through twelve attend an event in spring that orients them to the post-secondary opportunities. And all foster seniors in our USD are provided support in completing the FASFA and provided gift cards upon completion by LACO. Next, I'll share with you a little bit of the tier two supports that we are able to provide for our foster students through the ALCAP. Foster students often perform below grade level and struggle academically due to their high mobility rates. So therefore, through the ALCAP, students are provided, students who are identified in need of academic tutoring are linked with LACO's academic support, which provides in-home tutoring, uh, provided by trauma-trained academic tutors. Also, sometimes foster students need social emotional supports beyond those they receive through the Department of Children and Family Services. Foster students can be referred to participate in social emotional support groups using restorative practices, social skills, and mindfulness strategies for students at Viacorda and Gianna, provided by our ALCAP-funded district social worker. Uh, they can be referred to participate in mentor activities in collaboration with Mount SAC. We have a picture of one of those up there. The FRC liaisons work with the foster student's social worker or the RAC team to determine whether additional mental health support is needed, such as substance abuse counseling provided at all of our secondary sites to address, to, to address substance abuse. It is also, uh, common for our foster students to have limited access to extracurricular activities due to frequent changes in placement. Um, therefore, the FRC staff works with partners to get foster youth involved in activities, such as the VITA program through the LA Sheriff's Department. That provides, that includes a caregiver education component as well. a caregiver education component as well.
How do your teachers learn all these new programs that they want to, that they're gonna integrate in their classes? Are they giving PD that's specific for them?
Yes, for attainment, there were trainings that occurred as well as we gave them the materials. So several trainings over time with all of our mild, moderate to severe educational specialists. For read and write, similar, we have extensive training with general ed as well as educational specialist teachers and that's ongoing.
And since we know that as a group, the special ed students don't perform that well on state tests, are they taking their tests on computers, having to type like anybody else or could that be a problem since you mentioned they have so much trouble typing?
Really good question, really good question. So there's a couple of different tests. So the students with moderate to severe disabilities take what's called the COG and there is no typing in that test. But students with mild to moderate disabilities, yes, they will take it on the computer and that is something that we wanna look into in terms of managing that equipment as well as how they tackle the test. So it's something that I have an interest in, but the nice thing about read and write is that those accommodations that I talked about can also be afforded to them on, on the state testing. So I wanna make sure that students have, when, when we develop their IEPs, that it's very clear in their IEPs what accommodations are helpful to them and what they're using in the classroom so not only they can start to build self-efficacy and know what to use so they, but also we know what they're supposed to be using when they take those measures.
I was thinking of the student that you showed the short video, how much trouble he said he had putting the
Like forty thousand letters.
And he was very verbal, you know, and he sounded like he knew things, but I would imagine he would not test well on a computer.
No, no, so that's why we wanna start teaching them, not only training the teachers to instruct students on appropriate accommodations, but also help the students acquire knowledge about what helps them. So they could walk into a situation and go, you know what, I can't type forty thousand letters. I'm gonna need an accommodation, here's what works for me. Once they get up into the high secondary level.
If I wanted to come in and see some of these programs in action, we wouldn't have to have a formal thing, but I'd really like to come in and see how, how these work and how the students, and how you accommodate the students and how they use them.
Absolutely, let's set up some time.
Okay, I guess we paid, we voted to pay for these things.
Exactly, come and see them.
How we're using them and how they work. And I'm gonna, I might make some enemies here, but I can't imagine how, like this is for, for special ed and English learners, but I can't imagine how frustrating it must be for a teacher. Say a high school teacher or an eighth grade teacher, she just gets her class all set and now a student comes that speaks no English, maybe has had no, no education, how can she move her whole class forward with just the one teacher? You know, if, if to me, we're doing things for foster kids, making their, maybe making these foster parents take classes, we're not doing anything with these new English learner students and I don't see why the state doesn't require it. I mean, the parents, all parents have to realize that they have a responsibility in helping educate their kids. Just my thoughts. That's it.
Just a couple of questions, slide number eighteen. Are those numbers duplicated or unduplicated? The numbers, so like, for, for example, you have three hundred and fifteen students with autism, but
Those are primary disabilities.
Okay, so then the, so three hundred and fifteen wouldn't include somebody with a, with a speech or language impairment as well?
Not as a primary disability, but inherent in auti, in the diagnostic condition of autism is a language
So they're
So it's, so it's included in there.
Okay, and then on the, and I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses today, slide number nineteen, I can see it better up there, thank you. The read and write, does it make grammatical corrections for them or does it just type it exactly how they say it?
It, it, it's getting very good, we have it on our phones, some of us, it's getting very good at understanding voices. So it gets as close as possible to the word, it doesn't not correct the grammatical errors. That is the student's job to go through and, and have it read aloud to them, so that's part of the learning process.
Yeah, 'cause that was my concern is how are they learning that part of it if it makes the corrections for them, spelling, grammar, et cetera?
No, they have to go through and learn that part of it and make the corrections on their own. That's the whole learning process.
And, thank you, and then number twenty-nine, slide twenty-nine. Oh, you were talking about the counts. So for the homeless students, how do we identify them, the ones that are, okay, you gave two counts. You said, you know, this many we have, but we suspect that there's this many and that this many is missing?
No, it's not that we suspect. So currently there's two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one students who are identified as homeless.
Okay.
But since August thirteenth, we've had more than three thousand five hundred. So that difference of seven hundred and sixty have, have left or they, hopefully several of them have exited homelessness, but unfortunately we don't have a lot of people who, who are successful at getting out of this cycle. But, but it's a very transient population.
Right.
And a big part of it is, is helping families establish records so that they can enter the new school with, with what they need. And just teaching them, you know, you gotta have a file somewhere and it's gotta have all these things.
So we still may have several that are, that we don't even know about because maybe they didn't declare it or there's nothing, you know,
They're flying under the radar. Yep, but that's illustrated in our, our elementary versus our secondary identification. The numbers are more in elementary because the parents are a little more forthcoming and eager to get the help. By the time the kids are in secondary, they don't want any attention drawn to themselves.
Right, right.
We invite them to come to Fresh Start, they don't wanna come, so we kinda gather the stuff they need and give it to them on the down low.
Right.
Because they do not want that attention drawn. So sometimes they keep their parents from turning in the residency survey.
Is that the same thing with foster care?
No, they're, they, they come with the, all the identifications because they're, they have a lot of services.
And then through DCFS, they're identified.
'Cause I know one parent from the high school when my kids were there who the foster parents were like, no, kind of for the same reasons that you just indicated, that the child didn't want people to know that they were in foster care.
Definitely the kids don't want people to know they're in foster care. So we encourage counselors and teachers to refer to the foster parent as mom or dad, your mom, your dad, and never to say, you're foster mom, you're foster dad. And you're right, they, they wanna fly under the radar, they wanna just be like everybody else and so, and so we're, we're attentive to that and we, that's why the agreement with LACO provides the tutoring in the home because they don't even wanna be seen on campus getting tutoring sometimes.
Which I'll tie onto that is one reason I feel that we need universal breakfast program in our schools because they don't wanna take advantage of that service that they might be identified as a needing student or they're afraid that they'll be identified through government resources that are taking something and ICE might come or somebody might come and take their father or mother away. So, I'm still pushing for universal breakfast program. I just wanna go back to Dr. King, you know, I went to the Best Buddies Prom.
Thank you.
And I tell you, it's the second, third year I've gone now and it's just really heartwarming to go there. And when Ms. Emma Campbell was asking about the teachers, I had a chance this time to talk to Dr., to Mr. D, I guess they refer to him, and some of the other teachers and their families that were there. And I tell you, it's a totally different group of teachers that teach special ed. I mean, they are so warm and so caring, it's just unbelievable. And when the students needed something at the prom or needed assistance with the food or something, they were there immediately to help out. You know, as far as teachers identifying students that are in need of some assistance, boy, they're right there on the spot identifying it right away. And it really was nice seeing the interaction at that event. Someday I hope that we can make that event a little bit better, a little bit fancier than just having it in the gymnasium the way it is and make it a formal prom. A lot of the girls dressed up in their prom dresses, the boys, totally different.
I appreciate the feedback.
But also the Best Buddies Program, I notice you didn't mention that, but the Best Buddies Program is a phenomenal program that we have. I personally would like to see it enhanced and used more. It's kind of a, use, it's catchy, catchy hand basis and I'd like to see that used more in providing services and also giving other students the opportunity to work with the special ed. The Best Buddy Program, I think is fabulous. And I wanna thank Mr. Flores over there that he identified some things that needed to be changed in the new building, the building, those three classrooms. And within twenty-four hours, he had a resolution to the issue, so thank you for that. On the Family Resource Center, the homeless count, you know, the two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one, I tell you, if you come to the Succi food distribution every month, it's unbelievable. We're, we average between two fifty and three hundred families coming through there and more will, more are waiting to come. I mean, it's just what you can handle in two hours. And the need out there for just basic food items is just unbelievable. And going back to the safety issue about kids feeling insecure, you know, you can't learn if you don't have food, shelter, clothing and a feeling of security. And we identify that there's a lot of students in our USD that need that support and you can't expect them to do well at school if we don't provide these supports. And Family Resource Center, I think, is really meeting that need to a great extent now, especially with the dental clinic there now and then with our liaison at Succi and things like the Lions Club, Rotary, Quanis, et cetera, will all help provide these services to I think that's all I got for that. Thank you very much.
Basically, to the, we have all the English learners, we have newcomers, we have migrants and families, or how do we identify these, how, why, why do we identify these categories and how, and do we treat them differently or how, why, why do we, one more?
So I'm gonna go over a few, a few of the ones that are there, but basically there's different types of English learners. So our newcomers, the way we identify them is the ones that are recently arrived. So it's usually like three years or less in US schools and actually that's the way they're identified. And sometimes if we have a large amount of newcomers, we do receive funding for that, additional funding. And then in terms of sites, students who are, are with interrupted education, usually at the high schools because they come in, they do a student survey. So they talk to the students, the counselors do a very good job of doing an intake in terms of getting to know who they are and just having a one-to-one conversation after they register. And then that's how we internally, we don't have it internally identify who they are because we need to know that they need additional support more than other kids. The migrant students, those are identified also internally and, and those are, those are our migrant students that either work in the farming industry or either packaging industry, so they move from city to city or sometimes during the summer.
Do we have any of these? Do we have any migrant?
Yes, we have about, we have seventy-one and we have the most in the San Gabriel Valley right now because our consortium has dissolved because we've been getting more migrant ed students and our districts around us have been getting less. So right now we have about seventy-one. We also receive specific funding for that to provide additional support of whatever the base program is for all students. And then of course the Asili refugee status, those we don't identify also in areas that's on a personal level. And then what we have the, our long-term English learner and our kids that are reclassified, they usually are doing very well, but we are required by law to monitor them for two years.
Okay, who, who purposes for funding, for, for funding purposes?
For funding purposes, we get funding for newcomers if we have a certain amount, it's a percentage. So for instance, the past two, three years, we received funding, this year we didn't receive funding, we're gonna receive funding next year, it depends, it's not a number, it's a percentage of increase. For our migrant students, we do get funding and then of course, all ELs, we get what we call a title, Title III funding, which is specific only for ELs. And of course, our biggest portion is the LCAP and of course, we can use some Title I funding with ELs.
And for the SPOD test, is the, there's only certain, is this math, is the only subject doing?
No, they, they take all the subjects unless they've been here a year or less. So for instance, our newcomer students, even they've been here two years, they still take the same test as anybody else, the math test, everything else. So even though, that's why our numbers look low and obviously we wanna improve, but when we look at it statewide, we're doing, you know, we're, we're doing better statewide, but of course, we're working on that. That's, that's a, that's a subject area that, that we need to improve all around, but specifically we wanna make sure that English learners are continued to improve. But they take all tests.
Okay, thank you.
About the read and write, that was amazing to see how he wrote and probably struggled in the handwritten one and the other one was so easy. And you said general ed teachers also use it because a lot of, yeah.
Yes, general ed teachers have been using it.
Because I know kids are frustrated in writing, but yet their verbal skills are so good, so this is outstanding. I think that's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that. And then about newcomers, that picture that showed the high school, best one, oh, you're Do they have a special class that they can attend in high school to help them?
Yeah, they have, our newcomers have a two-period English language development class, so that's their class that they go and in addition to having classified staff support them and tutors, but at both high schools they have that.
And that video sounds wonderful. How long is it to get them, introduce them to?
How, how long is the video?
Yeah.
It's, it depends, it's usually just a few minutes long, it's not really that long, but some
No, not that I wanna see, I wanna see what the kids are getting out of it. You said to ask for bathroom and all that, sounds very good.
Oh, the first video, that's like, oh, this one's very good if you listen to it, it's, it's, yeah, that's okay, it's, it's, if you're not Spanish.
How long did it take for them to?
It's very good, but it's cute because they talk about the fact that one of them is from Mexico and one of them is from Honduras, which is where my family's from. And so they talk about different things that they felt the same, that they felt scared. They talk about how to go to the locker, they talk about how their ELD teachers, their special teacher to help them, so it's really, 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 really
And so how long approximately is it?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's five or six. Yeah, I think it's five or six.
Oh, it's wonderful. What a great idea for these kids to feel comfortable. And then just what Lynn was saying, are newcomers in elementary and not high school and junior high, let's say, what happens to them? Can't we have a newcomers classroom that they can go to before they go into the gen ed?
Surprisingly Surprisingly, at the elementary, at this level, we have some, but we don't have as many. Our newcomers, our large portion of them are at the secondary level, seventh through 12th grade, with a lot of the kids arriving in high school. So at the elementary level, we do get some and they also receive English language, what we call designated English language development, which means they have a designated part of their day where they have ELD at the different levels. So our beginning students to our advanced English learners. But surprisingly, we don't have that many that have, district-wide, that have recently arrived.
They are pulled out. They're just in the ELD class like Level 1.
So the way, yeah, the way it works is all the kids, they call it ELD for all the kids, which is something, sometimes problematic because I will have parents sometimes call me and say, oh, my child's in ELD. And they're not really in ELD, but it's ELD time for everybody. And the kids that are advanced or the kids that are, that are not English learners do, do something else during that time.
I know how many we have in elementary.
How many total?
Approximately, our newcomers.
So the newcomer, the ELD are in the 70.
I do.
Just like the two-year students.
Do they pull them out?
Yes. Yes.
The three ELD rotation, oh, they have their separate one, not the Level 1. You have the equal, they're different.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay. They pull them out of the classroom, I think, is by proficiency level. And I do have, how many, they are total, so let's see. There, I don't have them, maybe I'll just email you. I have it by school. So for instance, I'll give you an example. At Killian, there's eight overall. Well, actually, no, there's, I'm sorry. Overall, there's four. Then at Lanfr.
But is there enough to have a class? Is like, is there 25 or 30 in the total?
Not at, not at, not at each site, no.
No, not at each site, but if you pull them together, like at the district office, district somewhere that they could all go to to have a class or a newcomers class. Other districts have that when they come in, they get them situated and, you know, learn a little bit of English.
There, there's not enough to do because year by year, it varies. So some years, we may have more, some years, we may have less. So usually, what we try to do is incorporate them into the regular program with all the kids. And then they get that designated time and tutoring time. And some, some, some schools use their funds for support staff.
Okay, what about the intermediate kids too? Do they also just have ELD and that's all?
Yes, yes.
They don't have special classes?
Yes, yes.
Great presentation. Thank you so much.
Do we want you to transition then?
Can we stretch?
Sure. Sure. We have some.
Mom, sit.
No, that's not allowed.
Yeah, I might go down there. I want to put two for option.
For actors. Okay, she's ready to start. So after Tricia, Sylvia, so she's in the hall. So go ahead, Tricia.
Okay. So. Our teachers, our teachers, instructional coaches and administrators have had numerous learning opportunities this year thanks to LCAP funding. The ability to share practices, ideas and learning across roles and districts and sites has been pivotal to the growth of Roland. It has significantly impacted student learning because what's happening is the teachers are learning something from different schools, different districts and different grade levels. And they're coming, bringing it right back into their classrooms immediately thereafter, testing out the ideas and then sharing them further. Teachers had a chance to participate in professional learning days this year. It's been very customized to their learning within the focus areas and it's been customized to the site level as well. So it's really building on and scaffolding from what they learned last year to what they learned this year. And the exciting part is that they're taking that right back into their classrooms to, to change and transform what they're doing and the opportunities they're offering children. And then the children get very excited because the teachers come back to sites. It's also giving teachers and principals a chance to collaborate and build deeper understanding that goes directly into the classrooms. The instructional coaches are making a huge difference in the schools each year, especially this year because they're really collaborating so much together. As they go out on their learning experiences, they come back and they share. Every other week, the coaches join, join each other in meetings. And what they're doing is they're sharing what they're learning, they're sharing what they're actually doing in classrooms. And so their hands-on experiences with children, with teachers on sites are coming back, being shared across the different schools. And then they're actually learning across the focus areas. So that's, that communication, that collaboration is making a huge difference because then it's expanding across, for all students across Roland. They continue to make a difference at the school sites as they coach teachers. They're co-teaching and they're supporting principals and preparing site-based professional development. But really, they're working directly with teachers to have the strongest impact on the students. And most importantly, as the athletes need coaches, our teachers are really benefiting from that ongoing instructional coaching as well. Another very exciting part is that our teachers, instructional coaches and administrators have had many opportunities to go out and participate in conferences. Again, that learning comes right back. It's shared across sites, across schools and across grade levels. And then the teachers go right back into their classrooms and try the new ideas. So it's a very ongoing process. By attending the conferences, they're able to learn from the experts and then they bring that expertise back. They build their own capacities, share it with others and build the capacity of others. And the partnerships that we have with TC and Coatsen, along with other partnerships that we've developed have made a huge difference as well. Because they're learning that experts in those situations are actually coming into the classroom and they're working side by side with the instructional coaches and with the teachers with our children. And that hands-on experience from experts with our students is really making a big difference in how we're instructing them in the classroom later on. And evidence of that learning and sharing across the schools will come to life this Saturday at our USD shares when we have 34 sessions and 62 presenters. And those 62 people are teachers, instructional coaches and administrators in Roland who have gone out, have these grand opportunities to go learn things, try them back in their classrooms, expand on that learning, develop some expertise, and then they've decided they'll come out and share. So that would be an exciting day. And that, of course, directly benefits all learners as teachers, instructional coaches and administrators get to try their new ideas next Monday.
So I'm real excited to share all the great things that have been happening this year in terms of our parent involvement opportunities and parent training. This year, we've increased in terms of our training opportunities either at the site, at the site and at the district level. And that was the addition of our community outreach. We have been going out to, well, Maryam, Kim's been going out to the community and she's going to share a little bit about that. One of the things that our parents have been telling us for the past few years and I listened to them and the different advisory councils that I work with, they're very happy with the increase in communication that we've had. They've always said that it's very, they're happy with all the information that they get from district office. There, we have a big following, you know, in our, there we have this following on Facebook. We also have the Twitter. We've increased our tweeting. And our parents really enjoy looking at all, all the great things that the teachers are doing. And of course, a lot of our parents work. So this is a way for them to look into what are the kids doing, what are, what are we promoting? And as you can see, it's very high in terms of effective communication. They have also mentioned that they appreciate our LCAP funds, have increased our translators. So we have more translators and more increased time in translators. So pretty much, they've been getting whatever sessions we have, training, whether we have it here at the district, at the district, at the site or when Maryam goes into the apartments, they're there translating in Spanish, Korean and Chinese as needed. So when we look at the parent engagement framework, which talks about what do, what can we offer parents? There's different areas that we could offer parents, parents different opportunities. So for instance, the first one is leadership opportunities. So an opportunity to be involved and, and make sure to give feedback and be, be that site decision person or that district decision person to give feedback. So at the sites, we have just two examples. There's many, but two examples here, which is the school site council, which that's the one that approves the SIPSA. And then we have our English learner advisory council, which is all made out of our English learner parents at the different sites. We also have great district opportunities for parents to come and give us feedback, such as the superintendent's council, which is the general meeting from representatives throughout the district that come and meet with the superintendent and they ask for topics and then also give feedback on, on initiatives that we have. In addition to that, we have what we call the PAC, which is another advisory council for migrant ed. As for N, we have our DLEC, which is our district English learner advisory council. As we look at our DLEC here and to the left, they're getting training on robotics and 3D printing. We've been getting so much more parents that now what we do, we open up, we open up our lounge area here sometimes and parents go over there because we try to meet with them with small groups and not doing always like the conference style of sit and get, but do it a little bit more as a group activity. So at that, there, they were learning about just what their kids are doing in COVID-3D and robotics. So they brought in robots. They were working on that. If you look to your right, we also have our GATE Advisory Council that meets almost at a monthly basis. One of the things that the parents requested last year was that we have night meetings because they're very well attended in the morning. But they wanted to make sure we had night meetings for them. And we tried it out this year and we've been having meetings Friday night. And usually, we get from 30 to 50 parents. The first time we did it, we thought we weren't going to get any takers, but it was full. So we just had one last week and we had about, trying to think how many. We think we had about 35 parents last time. And then, of course, our wonderful translators and student services ladies are there, our classified support staff that help us and assist us in making the parents feel welcome. The other component of parent involvement is making sure that we provide the training for parents in different areas and also in terms of based on what they need. So not only what we think they need or what we, we want to make sure that we get feedback from them because we may think we want to provide this workshop at a certain level or a certain topic, but maybe that's not what parents need. So we try to always do our needs assessments the year before and look at what are the needs. So this year, we did our Latino literacy project with parents, which is really an opportunity for them to look at different, different, different literacy books, different genres and look at how do we read to kids? How do we ask questions that are meaningful from kinder through sixth grade? We also worked at our big parent involvement conference that we have at the prom where we had over 150 parents attend and we had several workshops. And those, those are just a few things. They're very interested in A through D course requirements. So we always make sure that we have a session on that. And then if, there's a lot of activity, parent involvement activities at the school site. I've just taken one picture of Hurley. So Hurley this year had a mini-parent conference. So what they did is they had several sessions that teachers held for their parents and they kind of, you know, Dr. Alarice had the, was the opening keynote speaker. And then teachers were out in their classrooms giving parents and parents had the opportunity to either go to literacy training. They either went to the counting collections. They had all kinds of different workshops for parents and the parents were very happy with it. But that's just one example because a lot of our schools do a lot with our parents on a, on a monthly basis.
All right, so it's great to see the board's vision here in the LCAP and especially now with this role that I have, just bringing the extension of the district into our families who cannot, for whatever reason, make it to the schools, come out and participate. And we know that innovative learning really means supporting everybody, which means our parents and our community members. And really trying to remove as many barriers as possible to close the achievement gap. Because again, oftentimes, for whatever reason, families can't make it to the schools in the nights, the days or the hours that we set. And I have yet to meet a parent that says, I don't want to help my child. It's just, it's not convenient for the time that they have. So I have been able to, on Saturdays, there's a picture up there, work with parents when they drop their children off at the Saturday Exploration Academy. I've worked with them in the area of math and they seem to have a really good time with it because we get to use manipulatives there. And then on several Friday evenings, I've been able to go into the apartments and do trainings around the area of literacy and teaching reading strategies where they actually sit with their child and practice the strategies that they've learned right then and there. Last Friday was great. I partnered with the Los Angeles County Library. There was a librarian from a Roland Heights branch that came with me and we issued 32 library cards. And for our families that can't make it to the library, they now have access to all of the online resources because now they have a Los Angeles County library card. I've also partnered with the Fiddle Family Clinic in bringing mental health services into their homes. And the director came and explained all the things that were available to them and their families. Again, because they can't make it to school to hear what these services are. And one of the great things that we've just started this week in the picture you see there is a tutoring center in one of the complexes that is led and manned by our students, our high school students, and they're supporting the learning of our younger students who live in that complex. Because we all know that when you have a very strong and robust home-to-school, school-to-home connection with the increased communication, it really, it really does accelerate the student performance and their achievement. So that's just some of the things that we've been doing to reach into our greater community.
All right, the next slide is about leadership in our USD. Isn't this a great picture?
Yes.
This is one of our principals. And as you know, our principals are, are our instructional leaders at the site. And as such, it is their charge to ensure that teachers have the support they need and lead the direction of the site. So they as well have many opportunities to build their skill and knowledge and take it back to the site. And at many of these locations, they're also learning side by side with their teachers, which is what the research says is more impactful when we're learning side by side with our teachers. And here you see some of those opportunities. The next generation science standards have been provided through the California Science Center. They've come and provided professional development K-12. We see that our principals are embarking on such programs as project-based learning. And they also go to sites in other districts that are implementing project-based learning to see what they're doing and bring it back to the site. Here are some other opportunities. They're visiting High Tech High to see the program. And if that is something that they're interested in, they come back and they support that program with their teachers as well. They have the opportunity to attend conferences and also be part of district-wide programs such as PBIS. They are leading the charge and they set the tone at their school. And so we, we know that it is very important for our principals to be part of the learning every step of the way. We also provide, Educational Services provides professional learning opportunities once a month for our principals. It's a three-hour block. Sometimes we go four hours, sometimes it's five hours. So sometimes it does dip into the principal's meeting. However, we know how important that is and we don't want to provide professional development that is too brief and not enough for them to take back the learning to their site the next day.
that is too brief and not enough for them to take back the learning to their site the next day. So these are many of the ways that our principals are receiving opportunities for learning. And a lot of it is aligned to what our teachers are receiving. Many times, the principals receive it before the teachers so that our principals are aware of what our teachers are receiving during district-wide professional learning opportunities. So now, after those three sections, four sections, we'd like some time, to give you some time for questions and answers. Okay, Angela Lynn?
No questions, but I do just wanna say that one thing that I'm really happy to see included this year is the addition of Miriam Pyeong's position in the more community outreach because I think that in the end, that's going to make a huge difference and going to have an impact in all the other areas that we have. So that's great to see.
I just wanna add on to that, I was reading this same article that Assembly Bill 2878 now requires, it broadens the responsibility of including family engagement in the Elcap plan. And when we used to have three or four sessions and that were centrally located, it just didn't cut it, having people go out to, you know, families, the apartments. We see that with the food distribution every month, that people, you know, we have people that would carry the food to their car. But most of those people walk to the food distribution. And the people that would normally carry food to their cars, carrying it to their house, basically, because they all live in that, you know, the area. Or even the rotaries, when they have their turkey giveaway. Dr. Mitchell drove many people to their homes on that day, you know, because they had no way to get the food back home. So, you know, they, they are limited on transportation. Going to them, I think is gonna be a great resource for them to have. The other thing is on the, when you talk about the library card, I just gave Dr. Mitchell a flyer today that's from the library. But they have a one-page sheet that shows all their services. And one of them is if they have a library card, they can actually get one-on-one to them.
Yes.
And no, and the fee is waived.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, do we have any like a one-page sheet like that? That we can give families that say, if your student needs help, homework help or whatever, you know, here it all is on one little page?
Same sheet that you think I'm doing at the library, maybe create that, write down each chart. But it's been about a year since we did it.
Yeah.
It's when that library was opened, usually, right? But I think it's been about a year. Is that like where he's been really down for a year? So it's been a year.
Well, they also have a library club or homework club.
They do, they do.
I guess.
Yeah.
And they have homework club where you can get assistance there. But just having that resource available on one little sheet would be nice when you speak to the families.
Put it in the new student packets.
Yeah, the student packet. I guess next year, was it this year, on the back of their ASP card, they have to have phone numbers if they need assistance, they can also. That's it. I just think I agree with Ms. Pride that getting services out to where people live is great. That though, I noticed you have the, you didn't mention it, the little lending library in the laundry room. It's one little picture here. It's in the laundry mat of the apartment building. And it's a little lending library where people, right there on the bottom right hand corner. That's in the laundry mat of the apartment building over by Hurley. So people can get books in the laundry, you know, down at the laundry, the laundry. We have our little library at our house. And I tell you, that is the most popular thing in the world. The shuttle stops there now. People are gonna come all over. We actually rented other children's books a week and a half ago. And so my wife put a thing on social media that we teach children's books.
I have some I can.
Oh, we got tons of them.
I've got some right now.
We got tons of them, including Laura, remember, some people know Laura Treber, Treber? That used to teach here. She contacted us through social media. She wants to autograph some books and put them in there. So it's amazing how social media gets to go out.
Yes. That's how I got the bookcases from Mathis Brothers. I tweeted them and they said, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, you just put a library out by your house and people go there. The kids love going there. So anybody can do it. Thank you.
For the community and to collaborate, but I, I do receive concern from the mobile home park. They, they keep saying their, their internet is speed very slow, so they won't be able to finish a homework. And they huck the owner no result. So is that the part we can talk or the issue can talk? Because that's, that's, you can, can do more than, than this part of our duty to, to talk to. How, how?
So students in our district, when we did our survey, as you might remember, around internet connectivity, it was whether or not they had access to the internet and whether or not that access was reliable. And so my, it would be self-reported by students if they did something. And if they were high school students, would be eligible then for hotspot when we did the 1 million project. And then we could look to see, I don't know what specifically what you're speaking about, if that's an area where there is lack of cell tower service in that area for internet connectivity? If it's the quality, if the mobile home park provides wifi? Or if it is the one that an individual person has purchased? So I, I don't, I'm not sure.
The one I, I mean, compared, I received the mobile home park owner, the facility, they provide the internet access.
For the park, then the individual residents, they need to acquire their own wifi if the wifi that's provided in the community is not reliable.
Have you spoken to Ken Magnon?
Yeah, he's the one.
There are two parts.
There's a deal too.
He has a problem.
I just know with speaking to Ken Magnon, you know, that there's a lot of issues there between the mobile homeowners.
Okay, this is not part of our Elcap, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, Lynn, thank you. I don't have any questions, but I wanna thank you. This was a good way to present what you presented today, having the in-depth, like a team approach. Each one of you took your expertise and shared that with us. I really appreciate it and thank you very much. Okay, I also wanted to say thank you, Ken Magnon, for the presentation. Miriam, wonderful what you're doing. Not only did you help the parents and the kids and everything, but I love the high schoolers. What good stuff it's been for them to do this. And good for the little kids to see these kids that are in high school that know, I'm gonna be like them. Good role models and everything. Wonderful. And I'm really glad you talked about the instructional coaches because when I go visit classrooms, they stay there. They have taught them so much and I see them in the classroom doing lessons, which the teachers are letting them do right after they leave and it's excellent. So thank you again for a great presentation. We have a couple more slides before we conclude. Again, here's the timeline of our process. And we look forward to bringing back the draft of the 1920 Elcap Plan and for board approval in June, June 18. Again, we wanna reiterate that we definitely go through a process of collecting feedback from our stakeholders. Students who were surveyed, again, fifth through 12th grade, focus groups, same grades at 10 different schools. And parent and community survey, as well as surveying our staff and different committee, committee groups. Thank you for your time. On behalf of the board, great job, all of you. What a great team you make. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And so we will recess to close session at 6:52.